Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the School Committee and the Select Board. We're here to look at the school budget request, budget which I believe that the School Committee voted on last Monday.
Yes.
And we're having a chance to take a look at it with all three committees and ask some questions about the budget and hope that it's not going to be a long presentation and we hope it won't be real long questions and answers, but there are some things we want to find out. So I will call the Finance Committee meeting to order.
We already called the School Committee to order as of 7:06.
We already called the Select Board meeting to order.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll start with Emory, give us a presentation on the budget?
Yeah, so we're going to keep it very short. I'll turn it to Adam.
Okay.
We're going to go through the summary numbers with different categories and the final number that was voted on. We can start with that.
Good evening, everyone. So by now, at least the Finance Board should have a copy of this in that latest spreadsheet that I had sent to you guys. I was unaware that I thought the rest of the Select Board was on that. So Jay, yeah, okay, so that's my fault, so I will send that to you guys immediately after this meeting. So this is just a summary of our FY '20 budget requests, and you'll see at the top there's our Chapter 70 from the state that has been increased as of the most recent budget proposed by the Ways and Means Committee. It ended up being additional $7,000 that was added to Chapter 70. You'll also see the override from, I believe it was 2005 or so, transportation, and then in-kind, and you'll see what the adjusted number for the town would be for $8,558,890. And we essentially got to that number with using some revolving accounts, some offsets, and we were able to balance to that projected town allocation number.
Okay, that was the summary that was, that I got in the email.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Does this include that surplus amount that was being stated, $193,000?
Um, not, no, it does not.
Okay, where is that?
That, so we would have to go into some more revolving accounts additionally for that money, so.
Okay, what is the plans for that money? Because like all town departments, if you have any excess money, you've got to turn it into the town so they can give it to free cash.
Right.
And then the people can redistribute it.
Correct.
Is that your, is that your plan?
Yeah, so we have, actually I have an internal meeting on Monday, the 29th, to start the end of year process.
So the balance will be budgeted at the end?
Yep, correct.
And then give the people decide what they want to do.
Correct.
That's great.
I thought that you were going to spend that money this year on some other items.
So, to Chris's point in the email, we, per municipal finance laws, we can't
Can't do it.
Use surplus money in the prior year to expend or use on expenses in the following year.
But you can spend it this year.
We could spend it this year, but not on FY '20 budget items.
But capital items are capital items.
Yeah, but capital item is going to go through the Capitalization Committee to get approved. They, they work on an operating budget, not a capitalization budget.
But nobody has to have capital, small capital items approved.
Well, it's just like they, they're going to have small capital items approved through the articles for the lawn mowers and stuff like that, which they, they pick them up.
But that's not part of the $139,000.
No, no. So, so that $139,000 that we, again, it's a projection of what we think we would have as a surplus this year. In any school finance job that I've been in, either you give that money back to the town or a city at the end of the year and they reallocate it in some other way, back to the school department or another town department, or you can, I don't want to say pre-buy, but buy some things with that surplus that aren't necessarily for next year, but you might be able to use for next year. That was, we were trying to be as transparent as possible with showing that number and showing what our plans are. Per Chris's email and per the finance laws, which I totally understand, we can't really identify that money to be used for next year's expenditures. So right now, it is just, we went a little more into revolving accounts and we'll be able to purchase it one way or the other. So it wasn't cut from the budget, it's just, it'll be purchased after July 1st.
So correct me if I'm wrong, if, depending on where that amount is coming from, there are some actions that can be taken with that amount. So if it's, let's say, a surplus that can be, that can, that can be reallocated or that comes out of circuit breaker, then that can be used for special, some special education expenditure even for next year. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So we have, they have to have those conversations and decide what portion of that amount that they mentioned can be allocated or reallocated for purposes that are allowed by law, and rest of it we need to.
You're right, but the exception is according to the MSBA, if the town is giving the school over net school spending, you spend all of your circuit breaker, all your Chapter 70, all your chapters, whatever's money first before you spend the town's money. You can't spend the town's money and then hold back all your money and say, "I'm going to save it."
Why not?
Well, yeah, exactly.
Nope, MSBA says no, once you pay.
You mean Desi?
Yeah.
Okay.
They said, because the town has allocated the additional money over the net school spending, that is, belongs to the town people. And they, they have the right to reallocate it, not an individual department. Otherwise, every department, granted, if they had excess money, could do it, and it's against the law.
Well, my impression's always been that the schools were able to operate a little differently from other town departments.
Up to net school spending, you are 110% correct.
Well, I don't think it's on just net school spending, I think it's on budget.
That's not what the.
Because, because we do not vote, we do not vote the extra money necessarily for any one specific item, or even for, even for compensation versus expenses.
You are 100% correct. Again, we put it into their pool, but Desi is saying, they have to spend the money that they have allocated first from the state before they can spend the money that's been added to it by the town. If you get a surplus at the end of the year, it goes back to the town. If it's a shortage, then like in other years, they come back to the town and say, "We need more money." That's the town's money.
But that would say then that, for example, the school choice money is allocated to the schools.
That's right.
That would say they would have to spend all of school choice money and run that count down to zero.
Yep.
Before they would be able to do anything else. And that's not correct.
That's not standard practice in school operations.
That's not correct.
Well, all they said is before you spend any town money, you have to spend your own money that you got, and if you got grants, you're going to spend that first time.
Right, right.
Grants have to be spent on things that.
That they.
That they're spent on.
Right, but when it comes to, when it comes to revolving accounts, and John raised up the point, like circuit breaker, like a school choice, that money is always one year in a year. So we're receiving money now that really is from last year, so.
It's like Chapter 70.
Right, there's no way for us to spend all that money down to zero and then go to the town. So I think, I understand what you're saying, I think we're all on the same page, it's just the way that it kind of got translated.
We're not on the same page.
Okay, so I understand what Jay's saying, but I also understand what you're saying. We wouldn't have to spend all of school choice and all of circuit breaker and then spend the, the town's money. Any, again, in most of the positions that I've held in school finance, you're never going to project to spend right to the penny. There's going to be a surplus, hopefully there's not a deficit. If there's a surplus, again, there's multiple ways to handle it. You could give that money back and the town can reallocate it in some additional form. There's some journal entries that can take place that would maybe put more liability on the revolving accounts and, and take that money up. There's, there's multiple ways to handle it, but to answer your main question, at the end of the year, we will be balanced, we will spend down to zero from now until June 30th, and we're going to have to figure out how that's going to, to work.
And according to what I was told, it depends on the type of form of government you have. Say you have a mayor. Well, a mayor has a lot more authority and elected power than any of us elected officials, because when we go before the annual town meeting, the voters of the class, we can only recommend versus a mayor's position or something like that, he has the authority. Another example, say we had a town manager versus a town administrator. Town manager can hire five, town administrator cannot. It just depends on the type of government you have.
Do you know what section of the law, so we can, you know, I appreciate the Dubraville, so if you can share that, we can.
I will email it out because it's.
At town meeting, we vote money for the school budget for the following year. And school goes through a process before all that and decides what it is they want to spend the money on. But at town meeting, none of that matters. We vote lump sum money for the school, and the school can spend it any way they want. And as a matter of fact, every year, the school's had meetings after and changed some things in their budget. Now, what you cannot do is expect that that, if, if you've got the $139,000 in some pockets of, of money that are there for accounting purposes, what you're not allowed to do is say that at the end of the year, "We've got that left over, so we're just going to wait and we're going to spend it next year." But what you can do is, right now, the School Committee can take a vote to change their budget for this year, and change their budget for this year and spend the $139,000 on all those items that you were going to spend them on next year, but you can't actually carry the money. I think you can spend them this year. But that's got to be, that's got to be checked. But I, I, that's always the way.
So here's.
Because the other thing doesn't make any sense, because like you said, not only do you not know necessarily how much money you're going to get, but of the money that you have, nobody has ever been required to spend all the school choice money.
Right.
So Adam, may I suggest that you, you guys have that meeting? And then we find out, and that was our understanding as well, that we find out and we kind of triangulate all these different pieces of information that are.
So all, all of Chris's point and the point of the, yes, finance laws, is in our spreadsheet, we had technology built into the FY '20 budget, and then we labeled it as, "No, we're going to offset it with previous year money."
Right.
Right? A simple fix is just take that money out of the budget.
Have the school vote to buy that stuff this year.
Take that money out of FY '20's budget and just pay for it in FY '19.
And it changes none, it changes nothing in the allocation for next year.
Correct.
Because that money is not figured in, in the budget, actually, because anything that you have offset from another source isn't figured in the money that the town is going to give you for the budget for next year.
It is, though. It is.
Well, you, and you think of it as your budget, because you think you're going to be spending it next year for the things, but that's not necessarily, but the town is giving you no money for that.
True, true, yes, correct.
I mean, there's, that's a, that's a complete wash on the account.
So, so at this point, it's semantics and not, I guess, to prolong it. We can identify it differently in the FY '20 budget. If we come to agreement at some point that we're going to buy it in FY '19, we'll reduce it from FY '20, or take it out of FY '20 and plan to use FY '19 funds with it. But we can get to that, you know, down the road. Again, that surplus is a projection, right? That number's going to change, could be more, could be less, might not have any of it at the end of the year.
It's not going to know until 30th September.
Exactly. So it, it's just a projection, but in our effort to be as transparent as possible, we wanted to put it all out there for everyone to see, and then we can have this discussion.
Well, we have the same issue with every department we have in the town. They have to obligate the money by 30 June, but not necessarily all the bills are going to be paid.
But you have to, you have to have bought something and created.
They, they. The, the, yeah, the, the has to happen by June 30 of that goods or services.
But you're allowed 90 days to 30th September to clean up your books and get it in.
And the, and the, and the other difference between the School Department and Town Departments is that the Town Departments are not all town departments, because we have tons of individually elected officials in town who run their own budgets. And the, for example, if the, if the Police Department looked like they were having a surplus for the year, they would not be allowed to just go and spend that on the board of the police team. The police team would have, would basically have to get permission from his bosses, which would be Chris, and then, we're going to Select Board in order to spend that money. But if the, if the town clerk had what looked like an excess and wanted to spend it on something, she is her own authority. She doesn't have to ask Select Board or Chris or anybody for permission to do that, because the town voted that money for.
The town clerk.
For the town clerk.
Right.
So I mean, we, I, I will say now, and we could be wrong, but this is the way I've always understood it for the 30 years I've been on the finance.
I was saying, the way it was explained to me, once we put money into it, over net school spending, that's town money. And that, if, if there's a surplus, you should go back to the town and say it's any other department.
See, and that, and that to me does not seem to jive with the facts of any expenditures. But that'll have to be something which is looked at in the next, we've got until, what, June 19.
I've already got plans for the money anyway.
So do we.
Yeah. Seeing you have it right now.
Yeah, exactly.
Possession will last.
Sounds like a good one, this one.
Yeah.
Actually, just to let it out of the bag, you know that I'm, in August, I'm putting in for a townwide IT infrastructure grant. I can't tell you if it's going to be matching funds, 50% funds, 25% funds, in-kind, whatever. I don't know yet. But, and the school needs a lot of work, particularly the junior season high school. Well, if we don't have the funds to do that, how are we going to handle it? You see what I'm saying? But we have to go to the people, just like I did when I did Article 6, and the people gave me the $1.2 million for the, the water project. That was the max that we could do. We're going to have to come up with money from somewhere. If we get a grant and we have matching funds, 50, 25, whatever it is we've got to put up, we have to come up with that money. And I'm looking at a townwide IT infrastructure grant, because the school in the town desperately, I mean, I could see David sitting out there. We did some tests in the school, and you're currently paying for 300 megabytes per second, upstream and downstream, correct, David? And some of the rooms are only getting 90 megabytes per second, upstream and downstream. So you're paying for things you can't use. So we need to fix that so you can use them. And we have other buildings in town that we need to do the same thing with. And that's why, my, my, I'm going to joke in the, the plans for the money, I want to see the whole town approved to include the, the school system. And David, and I know you know about it, Shel, because we've had emails back and forth, and Steve was involved with it as well. That, that's what I'm saying. We have to come up with the money from somewhere to do the improvement that the town needs. And I, and I'm saying, the town in whole, all the departments. I'm not singling out anybody.
What is the timeline for?
It comes out August generally.
And then what is the timeline for?
I got it done by September.
So for next year, that money's going to be available?
If we get the grant, we, I have to initiate it in August, just like last year, it has to be finished by September. We'll probably find out mid-October, and you give them one year to get it done. So you got your one year, basically you're going to get it done for one year after you receive the money, and that's all written in the grant.
We'd have to have a town meeting to accept the grant and allocate the money?
The same thing we did with Number 6. That's the same thing. So the question is, if we're going to go ahead and improve the school, and we're going to improve the town, where's the matching funds coming from? That's all I'm saying. Does that make sense? Because they desperately need it.
This is after the final. We have a, a different question. And I've handed out the sheet that shows the latest cherry sheet, which is based upon the House Ways and Means Committee that was turned in. And I want to point out something. First of all, everyone has had, pointed out to them that there, in the Chapter 70 line on the first, it's a two-sided sheet, in Chapter 70 line, there's an additional $7,010 coming for Chapter 70 money. And it's actually an additional 5181 coming for charter reimbursement. Turn the page over. On the next page, what you see is that the, down near the bottom, there are two rows, one for school choice sending tuition, and, and one for charter school sending tuition. The school choice sending tuition is the same under both the House and the Governor's budget, but the charter school sending tuition is different. It's different by $81,000 charge. So let me tell you what we've done in the past. The budget process starts off in November, maybe, and on a formal basis, sort of in February. And at that point, Chris sits down and figures out what all of the in-kind expenditures are for the town will be. And then he finishes up, and the Select Board looks at it, and then he hands it over to the School Department, so you know what the in-kind expenditures are. At that point, we have the Governor's budget, the things are based upon the Governor's budget. And that includes all the stuff that's in the cherry sheet at that time, based upon the Governor's budget. What happens after that is that there are times in many years, probably most years, where both the House and the Senate come in with budgets, and there is inevitably a difference. And nobody knows what's going to happen with the difference until they actually get the budget passed, which is usually way past when we were at our town meeting, and mostly the town's at a town meeting. So the process has been that we've always decided as to what budget is that we're going to be working from and work from there. If we want to change that, Finance Committee has always held that we ought to change the whole budget, not just a piece of it that affects one thing or another. So that if we want to include the 70, the $7,010 for Chapter 70 as an increase, then what we're going to have to do is take the $81,976 minus the 5181, or about $76,000, and say that the in-kind expenses went up by that much, which would decrease then the allocation for the town by that much. Now, the Finance Committee, like you, just got this budget this week from the House, so we have not had the time to discuss it. But we're going to have to, we're going to have to sit down and have conversations about what to do about this budget, and whether or not to change all of the figures, change none of the figures, or some of the figures. But as of right now, there is a, one of the opinions is that we just go with the original Governor's budget. Another is that we change everything. Another is that there's actually, the way that the assessments are made for school choice sending tuition, charter school sending tuition, from the Desi website, is that they actually adjust it about four times a year. So that is sort of outside the budget process, it's what Desi actually does. So there's another argument saying that because Desi says this, now they know that it's at least this much, so this much is, this much is cast in stone, independent of what the legislature does for its budget. So there's a third possibility, and like I said, we haven't discussed it yet, we're going to do this next week. But that would, in the, in the best case, that would just reduce this by the $78,000.
So just to make sure that I understand, the source of that money will change, but the amount will not, correct?
Source of.
But the source being, just if you were referring to the $81,000 plus charter school tuition?
Yeah, that's a charge to, that's a charge to the town.
Okay, so you, you're talking about the allocation, what does, what does that mean? Just it is basically completely taken out? It's, it's on the negative bucket altogether, and there is nothing that replenishes on the other side, or?
What it does is that where the town, where you have the in-kind expenses of, was it 12, 1?
2, 2, 2, 168.
Yeah, 2, 168. That would, that would increase by about $67,000 if we go with everything that's on this, on the new cherry sheet. And the, now, if we ignore this new cherry sheet entirely, then that number would stay the same, but the Chapter 70 money would go down by the $7,000. That's what the effect of all these, these things would be.
How, how, how has the district and the town done it in the past?
Well.
Have they ever reconciled to one final number?
I, I think that what we've done is we've gone with what the first budget thing has been, but I can't guarantee that, because, you know, it hasn't always been completely true.
Well, I do know that the, the state has got to verify the free cash and stuff through Chris's budget, and that's where it's all adjusted from there, the way Chris explained it to me. The state does the final, they give the final blessing.
So this figure, yeah, this figure could affect what the free cash is for the following year.
You're right.
Because it hasn't been, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, and again, that's sort of, that's sort of independent, because that'll happen no matter what happens with the budgets. This will offset free cash. And the, and the offset will not be necessarily disamount, but what the, the whole bucket is. The only thing that affects is whether or not the school gets to spend the additional $67,000, or whether, because that's how, how the budget process worked, or whether, if they wanted that, they would have to go and ask for an, an amount above what is allocated at the town meeting. So we have not, we have not had a chance to meet to talk about any of that yet.
And the $67,000 is.
If you, you look at, you look at the $81,976.
Right.
And that's a charge to the town. And you subtract from that the 5181 charter tuition reimbursement, because that's an increase to the town.
So it's about $30,000 or so?
Uh, it's about, it's 81 minus 5, $76,000.
Yeah, it's 5,000 more.
It's 5,000, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, we're talking about this one right here. Okay.
So we'll obviously need to know that before we go to town meeting, what the decision will be.
Oh, yes, yes. And we've got, we've got until probably, maybe the beginning, either the end of the second week in May, the beginning of the third week in May, to get this straightened out. Because the, the amounts have to get voted and to go to print. And we will get it sorted out one way or the other. All these questions, you put the question about the $139.
Right.
Yeah. The, I want to repeat again that after we had that first joint meeting two months ago or so, we congratulate the schools on their approach to try and get down to minimum required plus the override amount for the budget. I think that's a, I think that's a tremendous breakthrough in the whole budget process to start with that figure and work from there. And so once again, congratulations on that. We do have a couple of questions on some, on some points, one of which is that there's an amount in here for, I think it's entitled Blackboard. It's a, it's a technology that, we had a question a couple of months ago as to whether or not you actually have that technology available to you through another piece of software that you, that you have. And if so, have you looked at what the differences are and why you're going with the new one rather than the one that's basically free?
What's the, how are you making the assumption that it's new?
Well, based upon, based upon the conversations that we had at the meeting two months ago, it was one of the things that was talked about, because we talked a lot about the technology at the time. And Rob made the point that a piece of software which is already in use in.
Yeah, we actually were talking about it prior to the meeting, in terms of the app you're working at.
Okay, so Aptogee and Blackboard.
Blackboard has a version of it as well.
Yes.
So the research I came up with was, you have a budget in mind of, I think, $20,000 is what you're talking about. Ernest is an app that does school announcements, all that. There's apps available online, but it would actually come around 500 bucks versus 20,000. And I, Cheryl and I just actually shared that, but she explained also, there's some additional features that they're looking to incorporate, so.
And so the line item for 20 was for the strategic plan around communication, and Aptogee was a part of that, it wasn't the full 20. But what we're looking to do with Aptogee is to run it for the year, if it's the app that we choose, it can replace our Connect Ed. So if it's successful, the, the Blackboard Connect product that we're currently using, we would eliminate. But we won't, we wouldn't know that yet, so we want to make sure that's.
So you want, you want to try this for a year and basically have a comparison between what you can do with the two of them?
We want, so I'm very concerned to jump in with our emergency all-call with an untested product. product in districts. So I would prefer to make sure that we have our, our current all-call, which is our emergency if there's an emergency dismissal. I'd much prefer to have that in place because Aptogy really for us originally is going to be for improving the communication with the district through our webpage and an app design on phones. It secondarily can be used as an emergency all-call, but that, that's not its primary purpose. So I just want to make sure that we can, ensure that we can communicate with the community safely and, and keep kids safe. I want to keep that in place.
Yeah. The apps that I'm looking at, the trick here is we're looking at apples and apples.
Right.
Is, so the apps that basically that I forwarded to Cheryl, it's an Australian company, they make a product, basically they use for a bunch of schools around the world. Their setup charge is $541. Then they charge $78 per user per year, and then move to $136. So given the school population, we were talking about $500. So about a thousand, you want 500, you know, basically every year going forward at the 78 cents per, per user, assuming that, it's again, apples to apples, it's, it does the school, it does seem to, it does school announcements, it does Twitter fee, all that type of stuff, at a pretty substantial savings.
A simple statement?
So it's kind of called GTBUSI. They're Australian. I forwarded Cheryl basically the email I got from them in terms of their development costs, that's all.
And we'll definitely look into it. A lot of this will depend on what do they define as a user, is a student a user, if the student inputs four family members to contact, like all of that is what we'd have to get into to understand that.
Yeah, they're saying this, and somebody is having first visit charge.
Yep.
Now, I think that is all great, but it's all web-dependent. And for people who don't know it, before my finishing years, when I got too old to do too much in the Department of Defense in the Army, I, they sent me to school and I'm a Microsoft Certified Systems Engineer and a Cisco Certified Internet Expert. I designed and build networks for the Department of Defense. So I have a good idea. And when we're talking to, I don't know how many people are listening to this, so I'm going to explain it to you this way. A data packet is like a car. And a internet line, whether it's DSL or Comcast cable, is like a road. If you get too many data packets going down a road, or too many cars going down a road, you get a traffic jam. And that's why I think what the school is doing with their IT outlook is good. But be careful, because if you don't have the basement built before you put the roof on, you could get a misleading result. The adaptation could be great, it could be your network, that's the problem.
Yeah, the, the thing that we're talking about isn't, isn't basically local network dependent, it's basically, this is, this is an app.
But it's got to get out to the school.
Well, the, the way, it would. So the way this would work is there's someone with administrative rights, presumably Cheryl, and she's along with administrative rights that basically uses her smartphones to say, "No school today," or whatever.
But the question is, is her smartphone...
Then it's, then it's app receptive, basically through the cellphone system, not local network dependent. To, you're right, what you're saying, it's just not necessarily applicable to what we're talking about.
If you're not going through a town of Grammy network, whatever it is, you're hitting a cell tower or something like that, that's fine. But a lot of the things we have in the town of Grammy, for example, the thermostats in the building.
Yeah, all that stuff, are you absolutely correct with this particular program we're talking about?
Okay, but I just wanted to know, we need to build the foundation before we put the roof on. Because some of the statistics Dave and I went over, you're getting less than 100 megabytes per second travel and you're already paying for 300 megabytes. And you're planning as of one July to pay for 500 megabytes. I mean, if you look at some of the cables I've seen, they're Cat 5, and they're only rated a max of 100 megabytes per second. So not only the wiring, we've got to look at the devices. Like Dave pointed out to me, you've got some hubs upstairs, correct Dave? That are only 100 megabytes.
Yeah, there's very, very few of those, because most of those were replaced with managed switches last summer. But there's a few in like three classrooms remaining. Much better scenario than we were here about where there was several times that about that affected not only isolated classrooms, but offices, computer labs, okay? Now, just for clarification, the, you, you talk about the infrastructure and thank you again for, for helping us and supporting us with getting the grant. Before the items in the budget were finalized, I did reach out to the engineering firm that did the upgrades last summer, that was very familiar with what we currently had and what we added to the network. And the stuff that we are posing for next year, the user license net, what we currently have, I was told should support, the infrastructure we have should support what we're planning on doing for next year.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's going to be perfect, we're, okay? But I don't want people to worry that we're investing in something that may not work. Because we had an engineering firm do the project, went to understanding that within two years, the high school could potentially be operating on a one-to-one scenario. And we're probably going to be partially there next year. So what we did was build, this was put within, you know, the foundation that I was told we had.
Okay, the, the only question I would have going forward, do you have engineering documentation in writing that says that this is going to work? Because I can tell you right now, if you don't, these grants are not going to fly, because you've got to justify it. So if you don't have engineering documentation, and I know John's familiar, because I just did a grant last Friday and he saw all the engineering documentation that I had to do, these grants will not work because they aren't competitive. So what you say and what's in writing signed out by an engineer are two different things. And I'm not saying you're wrong, Dave, but we need to capture the engineering documentation to make it work. And I think we're all on the same sheet of music, but, because the town has to do it too, not just the school. The town has to do it too.
So I, I'm just trying to understand, great conversation, but the implication on the budget, you're saying that some parts that are currently allocated for technology should be left out because there will be a grant that we're going to be applying to, which would...
What I'm saying is unless you can show engineering documentation that it will work, there's no guarantee that it will work.
No, I understand that part. What is the implication on the budget conversation that we're having right now? I'm just missing the connection right there.
As I said, when we put in for the grants, like the one I got in front of you, it's $1,943,000, $328.40, that's what I put in for last week. We have to put in $560,000, okay, for that amount of money. Depending on the amount of justification, engineering-wise, we get for the entire town, is the amount of a grant that we'll put in for. And depending on the requirements of the grant, do we got to do matching funds? Do we got to contribute 50%? Do we got to contribute 25%? I won't know until August, when the formal 2020 grant is put out. I won't know what our cost of...
Are you saying that it's possible that the work that they're planning on doing to school might be covered by the grant, but only if they have this engineering justification?
Well, the only way we're going to get the money is with engineering justification.
You know, we, we understand that part. What is, but by, by, if let's say we were to get that grant...
Right.
By the time that you expect to get it?
Mm-hmm.
Would it do everything that we set out to do in this budget? And therefore you're saying that some portion of this budget that is currently allocated for technology expenses can be set out waiting for the results of that grant? Is that the conversation we're having?
I'd have to know everything in detail what you're planning to do. I know you're planning on purchasing more laptops. I know you're planning on doing some other, I don't know 100, I, I see dollar values. I don't see engineering documentation. I don't see maps. And I don't see criteria on what's going to be done.
So Jay, that's great to know. Can we ask this favor from you then? Can we have the specifics of that grant so that we would know what that grant would mean for the technology expenditure?
I can give you the specifics for this past year's grant. You can go to Community Compact on mass.gov and just put in IT infrastructure.
Okay, can you send that at least to David?
Yeah, I'm going to tell you right now, the stuff, the items that are in the budget are end-user devices, one-to-one, Chromebooks, laptops, computers, peripheral devices. That's what's in the budget right now. We didn't put in the budget any networking, any major networking process because that was done last summer.
There's no infrastructure in the budget?
No, no.
No, I mean, like, like Jay pointed out, down the road, absolutely, we're going to need to revisit that again, like any, like all the other town departments are going to need to visit. The high school is going to need it down the road, but we do not put anything in it for next year because I was told that we are all set for next year. Two years from now, that's another story. But the stuff that's in the current budget, to answer the question, is end-user devices. It's not capital, it's not, it's not infrastructure.
So it sounds to me then like that, what you're saying is that since there's no infrastructure in their budget, that any grant that we'd have to try to do infrastructure on the town would require that there be a study done at the schools.
That is cool. That's why I put in for the grants, they're called metagrams, Massachusetts Engineering Technical Assistance Grants, that we can get to get engineers certified with the state in here. Because once you get a state-certified engineer, you don't have to justify them, because they're already certified with the state. So that's why I like to use them a lot. But to David's point, they're using end-users, they're creating more data packs, going through their existing infrastructure. And it's already, they're already paying more than they're able to use. Now you're going to create more cars going down the road.
But, but sort of independent of that, if the schools are going to be included in the town-wide update...
That's the plan.
Then an engineering study is going to have to be done at the schools.
Everywhere, yes.
And if it's not done in part of the town, let's say the school part of the town, then we won't be eligible for a grant for the rest of the town, or we'll, or you don't own it?
I, until I get the specifics, I really don't want, I can tell you what they did last year, but I can't tell you what they're going to do this year.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But the thing that is, is all I'm trying to focus on, we have to finish the foundation before we put the roof on. And end-user devices is the roof. That's all I'm trying to demonstrate. Because if you, your traffic's moving too slow right now, like, like for your teacher's room, for your desktop, you have, you're paying for 300 megabytes per second for upload and download speed. If you go in your teacher's room, and I can go in there and show you how to do it, your download speed on the desktop in the teacher's room is 95 megabytes per second. You're using less than one-third of what you're paying for, because...
Jay, that's going to be true for, for anywhere where you have multiple devices in, in your own house, right? So when you have multiple devices in the same house, you're, there will be some slowdown. So if you can help us understand when this test that you're talking about was, was done?
It was done on the 18th of April and nobody's in school, so there was absolutely no interference.
So that actually tells me that's great. That tells me that there's a different issue there, that contractually what we were to get, we're not getting, so we should go back to the provider and talk about that.
I have, I have to share something very important here so that, so that people understand the scope. The 300 line was added to the district when East Meadow project was completed. It was brought into that campus for the primary benefit of East Meadow School, where there was a branded network, all branded technology, everything new. And it shared with the high school. So I want people, I don't want someone to assume that we're paying for 300 and again, East Meadow School is getting the full, they're, they're getting the benefit of that line. The network over there was engineered to utilize 300 and higher, okay? We, trying to plan ahead for the future, we had the high school and East Meadow interconnected so we could share resources and operate more efficiently. So yes, the high school is not getting the same benefit that East Meadow is getting, but we are getting 300 megabit from the, the provider. It's being fed into East Meadow and gets used in East Meadow, and there's an underground fiber cable that goes to the high school, to the main head end. And unfortunately, for the reasons you described, the high school does not see the same benefit. But it is being enjoyed by the other...
As I wrote, Cheryl knows, in the, in the statement of work in the contract, which hasn't expired yet, that's why we need to take a look at it, because if it's not meeting your requirements at East Meadow, they got to fix it before the contract's up.
Yeah, just, we're aware of that.
Okay, I'm just saying that. And as David says, you're coming off of East Meadow School. And now you're talking about putting more devices in the junior, senior high school. And all I'm trying to explain is, at the current speed, when nobody's in the building, is what you've got. And you're going to be adding more devices, like you're going to adding more cars to the highway, and it's only going to get slower during normal school hours, when people are in there using their devices.
Yeah, so we may need to do some more stress tests of that sort, because I, I hear you and what I'm, what I'm agreeing with you, and even in the same building when you have multiple. What I'm trying to understand actually is, maybe we can't have this conversation offline for, for that reason, that we have to understand what that means. The speed may be slow, but if we're getting what we need to get for now, and we can still wait for the grant that you're talking about, we're all good for now, we can just do whatever we need to do for the purposes we are trying to pursue for next year, for instance. So download speed, if I'm playing a game online, it may mean a lot of things to me, but if I'm just downloading a piece of information that is, that I need for my classroom, I don't need major download speed. So it's a matter of really doing the test to determine that kids, when they need it, they can get what they...
It depends on how many people you're competing with.
Absolutely.
I wasn't competing with anybody, because nobody's...
Yeah, that is, that is concerning, so just, we should look into that, but you know, we can just take a look at that offline.
And my concern is the new vice, new devices you're purchasing. I want to see them work. Cheryl knows, I know the school needs help, and I'm trying to help. But I don't want to see the town or the school purchase equipment that is not usable and it comes out of warranty before it is usable, is what I'm trying to say.
Understood.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask anything you want, if I was up to it.
I guess, I think what we're going rambling about is, what is it, what's the bottom line that you're looking for? Are you saying that you need X dollars more in our budget or different...
What I'm saying is...
So if we, if it's something that's not necessarily about this school budget and its other stuff, can we try to bring it back to how, what we're here for to go over this? Because I'm not sure what it is that you're actually asking for us for this particular school budget. And I don't think we're going to be, we can sit here and talk online for up to an hour or...
I'm just telling you, my concerns on what the school is planning on in the new devices are only going to slow the network down than it currently is, because there's nothing built in for the infrastructure. And I want to see the school and the town succeed.
Yeah, we do too. So we understand that.
That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll look into that and...
Yeah, and now we may have to take some money from one location to another to get that infrastructure up as fast as possible, so all the devices that you buy work as designed, because you're telling me you need MCAS online and everything like this. And I would sure hate to see that you go out and buy all this equipment and everything else, and then they sit down to do the MCAS, and all of a sudden, it's too slow.
Well, I, I guess the school can purchase their equipment and see how everything works on their network, or if there needs to be upgrades and stuff like that at the time.
Where are you going to get the money if it needs to be upgraded?
Well, that's something they can, they can look at doing.
That's a capital expenditure, the town should be doing that.
Well, that's what I mean, Jay, that's what I'm talking about. If that's, if they, if they think at that time that the equipment they bought and things are just running too slow, maybe it'd be running fine. We, we don't know until that actually happens. We can, we can, leave me out, Jay.
I don't say anything, I'm just...
We can guess all you want and think it's going to have a major effect, we won't know. And if that time they get it and realize, you know what, we do need, we do need to somehow upgrade our system, well then they can come back to the town, ask the town, the town will decide whether they think it's worth or not. But also, like you talked about, there's a grant, and we, quite an engineer study saying, yes, they have this equipment, but they don't have the, the needed technology to, for this equipment to operate correctly. And I would think that would play a part to the grant, no?
No. It's the engineering study of your requirements versus your current status, is what it comes down to me. And I've been doing this for a lot of years. And I can pretty much forecast, based on past experience, what I can see. And I'm trying to share that with everybody, so we can fix the overall issue as fast as possible. That's all I'm trying to say. So we might have to take some of the money from the current expenditures and reallocate it to some infrastructure, so the other devices will properly work. That's what I'm trying to say.
But again, that's something when after the school purchases the equipment, looking for...
After you've purchased, too late.
But it's their money to start to allocate what they wanna do as far as... This is only a place into our budget, what we're talking about now, it's something for their future.
I wanna be cautious to Jen's comments. We gotta pull this back. But this budget and the one-to-one devices were presented two months ago when we first sat down. And now this is the first time we're hearing about we might need some improved infrastructure. So had that been the case, and I trust David, his experience in the school, and we built this budget, and we know how many devices are gonna be on that network at one time, and at no point, unless I misunderstood him, did he have any concern that our network at its current capacity would have trouble handling this?
And this is based on technology?
So I go back to two months ago, when this one-to-one has been our objective from day one. It's been in the budget day one.
Was this a grant in the technology audit?
Infrastructure was not. The audit really looked at teaching and learning. But to Adam's point, I do trust David. David is very thorough. Whenever, as the leadership team, we're talking about technology purchases, his first call is to our network engineers, to ensure that the devices are gonna work. Now, to David's point, they might not work at 100%, but we are well accustomed to not working at 100%. And David is very good about making things work. And when we do notice that there's a slowdown, working to make sure that teachers and students have what they need. So I have full confidence that David has done the due diligence. So when these devices do come into the district, they will be purposefully put out to students and to staff. The other thing is, we will have some devices coming off the network. With the addition of the one-to-ones and the Chrome carts, we'll be looking at reallocating and pulling many of the older devices off the Windows machines, and really taking a look at the overall structure of Granby Junior/Senior High School. So yes, we understand. We are constantly looking at our infrastructure. But David is certainly well poised to do that for us. And I think working with you as you move through the grant process will be a good partnership.
Okay, I think we've fully explored this issue, John. Do we have other questions, finance committee for the school?
Yeah, we have some other issues. I think maybe, I think one thing that we may have learned is that there are clearly demonstratable issues with the school's infrastructure. And that that's going to have to be looked at, and really should be looked at fairly soon, so that it can get wrapped up by the end of the summertime, when we're trying to get, for the town as a whole, a grant to move on the infrastructure of the whole town. And I think that's the big thing. But it's not necessarily going to impact your budget in that the devices that you're planning on buying, you know you're gonna hook them up, and you know it may be a little bit slower. On the other hand, you're slower anyway.
So what else we have?
So are we okay with all that? Okay, good. Looking at it, again, there were some things on the display on where you were using offset expense, offset income. There are a couple of items on Holyoke tuition. And that's your explanation that there are some students who are getting special education services in Granby. They're in the Granby school system?
It's a Holyoke student, a Holyoke resident student that attends Howard Special Schools.
Yeah, and what we see is that the repayment is half of what the expenses are. What is, what is going on there? There are two items where there is an expense of $16,196, and the tuition, Holyoke tuition is $8,098.
So those are two paraprofessionals, and just correct me if I'm wrong, those are two paraprofessionals that provide service to this student, and we're offsetting half of their salary with that tuition from the student. So they get their full salary, $16,000, half of it would be paid by the tuition revenue from Holyoke, because they're providing services to this student.
So they provide 50% of their services for the student?
Yeah, we have two, two paraprofessionals that are versed in working with this student. And one works in the morning and one works in the afternoon.
Oh, I see, so...
Yeah, the question is, is that the reimbursement seems to be half the rate of what it's costing us.
Don't, it's not a reimbursement. We're just offsetting their salary by 50% because they're providing services to this student half of their time during the day. So of that $76,000 revenue, we're giving $16,000 of it. We're gonna apply it to their salaries.
So the $16,000 is not what it's costing us to provide services to these students?
No, no, it's the salary of the pair. Okay, yes, sorry. It's the salaries of the paraprofessional, yes, sorry.
There were also, there were two items on settlement agreement with White Oak. Was it two separate items? White Oak settlement agreement?
Yes.
Two separate items?
So there's two, again, pardon me if I'm wrong, two separate students that we have settlements that we're obligated to pay. In the past, they've been at $40,000. We've done the math and got it down to about the penny, but it's not a duplicate expense. There are two separate students that we have settlements for. And the settlement agreement, I believe, is 90%. What are the terms on it?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent of, we're responsible for 75% of what the settlement amount is. So it's two separate students.
It stuck out, because he was the only one that wasn't fully covered by anything, okay. There's the item on the TI-84 calculators. $9,000. Do, are these, do they stay in the school? Are these given to the students? What's the, how does the process work with them?
Well, I mean, it could go one of many ways, but our plan would be they'd be similar to a textbook, so they would get signed out, they would get assigned to a student. Student could use them in-school and out-of-school, and they're responsible for them, just as they would be a textbook. So if you lose a textbook, you're responsible for paying us or replacing it with the same text, and the same would be with the calculator.
So at the end of the year, then they come back to the school, and they'll be used in the following years for whoever needs them for their...
Yeah, that would not be like a reoccurring expense at that amount every year. It's just that we haven't had them. The expectation has always been that students purchase them on their own, but in terms of equity, some students just can't purchase them on their own. And there are certainly necessarily certain areas that our students are disadvantaged, and they don't have them.
And these graphic calculators, not something, a functionality that the tablets that we're giving students, the Chrome students can do?
Well, you couldn't take a tablet into like the SAT or ACT, and the functionality of that is a little bit different. So we feel it's important that they're versed in it in the classroom. So I think there are some similarities, yes, but then we get to some standardized tests.
Adam did get a good explanation for it, wasn't he, from the principle of the...
Yeah, full disclosure, that response I gave to you was from one of Steve's teachers, but it was one bullet of about maybe five or six. So I picked that one, because I thought that would be the easiest one to identify, that we wouldn't be able to bring a tablet into an SAT or a standardized test.
Do schools offer a course to teach two people how to use the calculator?
The school, we wouldn't, we're not planning a specific course. We're planning some instruction around how to use it. It's integrated into the curriculum for the more advanced math classes.
Yeah, those calculators have been, they've been used, or they were required for some classes, some advanced math classes. And as Stephen said, we used, at least in my children's cases, you know, we paid for them, but they are expensive.
I'm a twenty-four-year-old. I'm sales sales.
Amazon's out the same price.
And if you go then, I have a tactic, some card.
I'll be proud of what I was told.
A million and one?
About seventy. Either of you have any additional questions on, we had a meeting... I think I do. Back when we were talking about the funds you have, what do you anticipate you might have in the way of revolving funds left over, if the budget, the way you presented it tonight, goes through?
So it's kind of two parts, all right? Practice would be to always have at least one year in arrears balance in our revolving accounts. Because of some different budgeting ways in the past, there has been more than the one-year arrears in those revolving accounts, which has kinda helped us to be able to offset this year some additional funds. Even with all these offsets, we will still be around about one year in arrear offset. So in Circuit Breaker, it would be 300 or so thousand dollars, maybe a little less. School Choice would be about, I don't know, four, $450,000. The goal is always to be one year in arrears. That's good practice. I think this year, we dipped into them a little bit more, so we weren't on town meeting floor asking for additional money. But it doesn't put us into a position where they're wiped out. We're still in a comfortable place with those revolving accounts.
Any other questions? You got any other questions? The school committee, you got any questions? If not, then I wanna thank everybody for coming again. I think this has been, myself, I think this has been a very good meeting. It's been very good for the finance committee to be able to meet like this and finance some...
So John, for town meeting purposes, are we, are we to assume then that the finance committee is in support of this budget that we presented?
Yeah, we haven't had formal conversations about it, and we have to have a conversation about the, about the, this latest lip here. We are, we are in agreement with the principle of net plus the override. If there's nothing else on the rural general meeting? Thank you.